We are on duty. Evening, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role, please?
Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Naylor?
Present.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
Ms. Perez?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mayor Sarno?
Present. Allow me to rise from all the silence in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America. For the Constitution, for our nation, for God, for the citizens of this country. Thank you very much. We'll now move to information of the special items A is a superintendent's PowerPoint presentation of supporting data for superintendent's evaluation of 2019-2020. Please, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to do a PowerPoint as we have done the last few years. We're going to project it up on the screen, which we're doing right now. And then there's a binder that has the PowerPoint, but it has all the evidence. Delivered booklets with all this information to all the school committee members. So we thought we'd start with a PowerPoint, then quickly go through the book of evidence, and then have Attorney Phelps go over the process involved in completing the evaluation. So we'll start with a PowerPoint. The only way we start with our strategic plan, and we keep that up front and center in everything we do to kind of guide us, as we have through two iterations of that plan. And we actually were working on our team now on our third iteration of the strategic plan today. Quick overview of the district performance year in review of the data. And if you look at the chart, you can see that we've made progress over the years. We're comparing the data for 2019-20, which is in the far right, going back to 11 and 12. It's on the far left. And as you can see, in a lot of the data areas, we're up in all those areas. The attendance is up overall in K and 1 on the top column. The second column has grades 1 to 12, which is another way we report to DESI. So you can see we're up to 92.9. In the first one and the second one, grades 1 to 12, 93.1. You can see considerable improvement over the years. Chronic absentee down from the years before, 10% chronically absent. Again, grades 1 to 12, percentage differently. But both columns, again, moving in the right direction and going down. But still, in every urban center in Springfield, too, a significant challenge for us. The next piece under high school completion. You can see the four-year cohort, while you can see great gains over the years, 56 to 6 in 2011, 12 to 73.8 last year. So that's an over 17% gain. We had a little dip from 18 to 19 in that category. And that's always a year in arrears. Five-year cohort graduation rate, again, an enormous gain, over 20% gain. We've gone from 59.5 to 81.3. The gains in the four- and five-year rate are some of the best in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Dropout rate, you can see a similar trend, again, moving in the right direction. We started at 10% in 11 and 12, it's down to 4.4. So again, cut in less than half. And in those three areas, we have some of the best improvements in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. SAT participation, you can see a negative direction on the SAT participation. We had that disruption last year with the shutdown, and weren't able to get the SATs administered. We worked hard to bring some kids in this year for the ones that are tested we needed, and Yolanda did a great job of that. Advanced placement qualifying score, this is a great story. Even though our exams taken went down last year, again, we were experiencing a disruption. We had a huge gain relative to the kids who are actually getting the AP qualifying score. We were at 223 on getting the score back in 11, 12, it was like 408 last year. So we get an enormous gain. You can see the exams taken is up over the years, but down a little from last year. Again, given the closure in March 13 affected that. But now the next data that we present to you, the different categories, is going to be the data as of 119th day of the year. So the comparison years, we did up to 119th day, because we closed on 119th day last year. So it's similar data. So you can see that in the over areas where teacher attendance, paraprofessional attendance, teacher sick time, paraprofessional sick time, again, over the years, movement in the right direction in that. And then school climate and culture, again, as of 119th day. You can see in-school suspensions are 10% of what they once were. Out-of-school suspensions, we've cut less than in half. But you can see there was a little slight decline last year, over the year before. But overall, we're down to 40% of what we once were. Arrests students, 10% of what they once were. And bullying, again, way down, small percentage. So definitely moving in the right direction on that. The next slide, as you're used to seeing our MCAS data, and as you know, we were not able to administer the MCAS last year due to the school shutdown. So what we had worked on years back is doing a formative assessment with Achievement Network. And we always use the ANET acronym for that. But with the ANET results over the years, we thought they'd be the best results to show comparison from year to year. And we have that on display for you. We gave the formative assessments in ANET last year, and they have given them for the last several years. And we wanted to show growth using those. They have had a high correlation to MCAS over the years. So as the kids have improved on ANET, it follows they improve on MCAS, because it's a test. Achievement Network is a Massachusetts company, and they designed their test so it correlates to the MCAS relative to the composition of the test. And the results are predictive as well. So you can see, you know, we did the same categories we did with MCAS. And you can see in ELA, from 1819 to 1920, we improved in every area. Usually when you improve on, what's happened is if you improve ANET, MCAS would improve. But we went out of school just before we gave the MCAS. Grades three to eight, we were able to do A1 to A3 with all of the kids before the disruption. High school, you can see a similar pattern, except you see a decrease, and you see a note on math. We were only able to give the ANET 1 and 2. We didn't get to the third ANET before school closed down, so that caused a delay. So we compared math, A1 and A2, last year to the year before, so it'd be a similar comparison. And that went down a little bit. We didn't get to give the third ANET, so we weren't able to include that there. But you can see in every other area in math, again, in all the subgroups, as with ELAs. Instead, in the EL subgroup, we went up in every area other than the overall math. The next section, similar to last year, is looking at the goals we set, starting with professional practice goals. A big piece has been implementing our supervision and evaluation program. As improving the quality of what happens in the classroom is centered on what we do as an organization. And you can see last year, we worked hard on differentiating our professional development, actually providing extra training to administrators where the feedback wasn't of the quality that some other administrators were doing. So we offered those administrators a separate course, instead of giving everyone the same training every year. And in addition to that, we trained all of our new administrators and integrated more liability, so that we're improving the quality of feedback. And as you can see, two items down, the quality of feedback given did get to proficient at a higher level. So that goal was achieved. Observing educational practice, we had set our goal at three observations. We closed down just a little bit short of two-thirds of the way through the year. So getting to two observations last year would achieve a goal, because we missed, again, the last third of the year. You can see the quality of feedback in the next column went from 71% to 81%, so that was met. High visits to the schools went down, but of course, we lost again a third of the year. So we rated that as having made progress, but we weren't able to complete those. The next page, again, with ANET around our goals. And our goals were to improve MCAS from the year before and narrow the gap. So we substituted the ANET results for the MCAS. And as you can see in the comparison, we went up in every area other than that. All students' math at the high school level, in all the subgroups, and overall, in both ELA and mathematics. And again, that was the best substitute we could do for MCAS, and it highly correlates. The next area on student learning, ELL access scores. So in grades K to 8, you can see we went up plus 0.58% up to 54.8. So, I mean, up to 58.2, excuse me. Again, a 5.8, we met that. The high school level went down, so we didn't meet that goal. That went down minus 0.41, showing the progress there is harder, as the gains the state is looking for are much more significant. But overall, on access, when you add all the grades together, we were up. The DESI accountability system goal, we didn't get a criteria reference target goal this year, because the MCAS weren't given. So we don't have a new report. But, you know, last year, we were in that significant progress. The next slide, yes, our district improvement goals relative to graduation and dropout. You can see we didn't meet the four-year goal for the one-year piece, as we slid down a little bit on the four-year rate. But we are up considerably as a body who worked over the years. That's some of the highest improvements in the state. On the five-year rate, the next one, you can see we were up overall. Now, this number is the five-year cohort rate. And on the other sheet, we have the five-year adjusted cohort rate. So there's two different rates. So the one we put in the goal was the cohort rate. So we went from 57.3 to 78.8 and made that goal. That five-year rate has just been going up. The new DESI statistic is the five-year extended engagement rate. So how are you keeping kids in school and on the path that don't finish? And as you can see, we've gone considerably on that, from 61.2 in 2012 up to 83%. So a significant gain there, and we met that goal. And again, we met the dropout rate goal, reducing the dropout rate from 10 down to 4.4%. Now, the district improvement goals. The attendance rate, as you can see, we talked about earlier, that's up overall. Chronic absent rate is down, we met that goal. Improving staff diversity, we just met as a subcommittee, but that overall data, we took this data from EKIMs, but the all-staff data proved also. We met that goal, increasing staff diversity. Reducing out-of-school suspensions, we did not meet that goal. As you can see, we made tremendous progress over the years. But when we cut off, again, we went to 119th day for this data. And in all the comparison years, where we cut off, we were up a little bit over last year. But way down overall, to a fraction of what they used to be. And student arrests, again, 10% of what they used to, and we met that goal. Some of the district improvement goals continued as our partnership with Empower Schools. Empower Schools had a couple schools leave under performance status. And they put some nice new programs together, including the Honors Academy of Commerce, Pathways of Commerce, Rise Academy. By CM Dual Language Program, we were able to set up a SLIF Academy at the elementary and high school. We hadn't done it at the middle school yet. They did start one for us at the middle school, which was a nice step forward. Kylie, they re-divided Kylie into several different academies to move that school forward. So there's a lot of nice programming improvements they made that we worked with them on. The We Learn Program, I think, we never thought when we started the We Learn Program that we'd be educating our kids remotely. But thank God, we moved that forward on this program when we did, because it allowed us to make that transition an incredible manner. But, you know, we were able to turn around very quickly, get the one-to-one technology. Teachers had a lot of training over the last five years in using technology. You know, we were able to get the one-to-one home and put it in all grade. And almost nobody in the state had learning management systems in place. We identified classrooms already at the second level, secondary level, and we put Schoology in at the elementary level. So we've been able to move forward to provide a quality remote program that's been recognized around the state. We actually spoke to a legislative committee. And then the work on engaging the community in our Portrait of a Graduate work. We have a community team that's working on that. We have a BAR Foundation grant that we've been working with. But we've been able to identify and get 2,000 stakeholders involved, giving us a wide feedback relative to putting our new strategic plan together, again, looking at how we want our graduates to look and our students moving from level to level. So we had a committee meeting on that today, and that's been going very, very well. And it's so important to have a strategic plan, and this will provide us with a framework to put a quality strategic plan together for the future. The next part of the evaluation is some key pieces we did under each standard. As you know, the evaluation is broken up into the four standards. Standard one is instructional leadership. Standard two, management and operations. Standard three, family and community engagement. And standard four, professional culture. So what I've highlighted on the next few pieces, and I'm going to run through it quickly with you, is some of the key areas in each, under each standard, that we've been able to implement over the years, over the year. And then in the binder, we've included the evidence that would go with some of these items as we go through. And I'll show you that in a few minutes. So one piece was under instructional leadership, which is standard one. After COVID-19 school closure, we were able to pivot very, very quickly and get information out for remote teaching right away online, which, again, most other districts couldn't do. While we got that information out, we also, through our meal distribution program, were able to deliver hard packets of work for those that needed that, to give us time in the interim to actually get all our take-home computers out to the students if they hadn't taken them home. And we either delivered or had them delivered to all of our students. So we were able to move 17,000 computers out, so every family had a computer, you know, grades 1 to 12. During the summer this year, we hired SPS teachers to put over 640 video mini lessons together to support teachers in delivering remote instruction, to get everyone started. Some of our key teachers to get samples up there for other teachers to follow. And during the summer, or actually, we started our reopening team back in March when we closed down. And we put teams together to actually look at forming a remote, a hybrid, and in-person models, which we delivered and were accepted by the state. In the special ed division, during the spring, we had to develop individual remote learning plans for every student with an IEP. And in Springfield, that's 5,000 students. Some of the key items on the next page is train 79 staff serving students with disabilities and teletherapy requirements. So during the spring, so we could keep the therapy going, speech and language, all the other modes of therapy, we did a teletherapy model so we could continue to deliver the services. We also developed a special education webpage to assist students and families with resources, training activities, and curriculum, just to give parents another resource to help them through this process. We talked about the full implementation of seeds earlier in the presentation, so I won't go over that again. But we've made progress in that area as well. The next slide, the instructional division, some of the new programs we put in place. Again, choosing a very highly rated curriculum that comes through that national rating area, some of the best. We put Rennie Math in at the elementary level. We put the Center for Collaborative Class and Literacy Sweden, K to 2 at the elementary level. Illustrative Math at the middle school level. Inspire Science and TENS STEM Scouts at the elementary and middle level. So a lot of new curriculum adoptions to move to the new standards that DESI put forward. Some of the new curriculum we're putting in, also Saddleback Curriculum for Secondary ESL Students. And again, the work in the science division. Along with that, we put Second Step in all of our schools for an elementary social-emotional curriculum. Trained all the staff, and we did the planning on it last year for full implementation this year. So we had it in some of the schools. We bought the new program and implemented it in all of the schools. And we also implemented a new social studies program. Next slide. Relative to the empowerment zone, again, I talked about the SLIF program, Advanced Sickle. They named the Virgins Academy, but that was something we wanted to do, so our kids would have those SLIF kids. The kids with interrupted services that come to Springfield, that not only don't have the English language skills, but many of them haven't been at school at all in the country they came from. So they need a specialized program, so now we have that, K to 12. ELL department also put that seal of literacy on the diplomas. And we were able to recognize more students, 14 more kids this year with it. That's our second year since we put that in place. And tremendous progress in the ongoing implementation of the ELL plan. ELL had to do individual plans for 4,800 EL students during the shutdown and put those plans into place. And they created an EL Parent Academy, which is very important to get that parent feedback. Moving on, Computer Science Initiative. We've been working on this for a couple of years, but at the elementary level, teaching computer science at the different grade levels. We took on K and third grade first, now we're adding first and fourth grade. The Digital Now Grant to expand computer science for the middle school grades. You know, it's the future for our kids to have these computer science skills. And we implemented the Schoology Learning Management System this fall. After planning it last year, we already had unified classroom at the secondary level. Most school systems were looking for the state's help to put learning management systems in place. We had already put them in place. Another thing we did, which helped us tremendously, is we have a Zoom account for every teacher, paraprofessional administrator, and we seem to live on Zoom meetings, and everyone has to have access. And, you know, we provided paraprofessionals with laptops a little over a year ago. That certainly helped during the shutdown. But have everyone participating in these Zoom meetings is very, very helpful. And our Effective Educator Project, a big push is the retention of our educator workforce and the improvement. And we added more effective educator coaches out in schools from 78 to 94 last year. A big piece at Central Office is the Priority Schools Protocol. We've implemented it the last few years. We target additional support, school audits, professional development, learning blocks, to the schools that the data shows that they're struggling more to achieve their targets. We're providing specialized help there. And again, a big focus on looking at their professional learning communities and providing the extra support those schools need. So we're targeting the schools that need the help the most for the most support. Conservancy of the Arts was awarded an Innovation Pathway designation in a highly competitive process to get some funding to look at some innovative careers through the Conservancy of the Arts program that we're running now. We implemented the school turnaround efforts. We had 11 schools where the turnaround plans were accepted. We have turnaround grants, assistance funds at 10 schools, and a full school redesign. And this is while a school is not in Level 3, that's South End Middle School, that we're providing that targeted support to those schools and have significant state assistance financially to do it. Before schools get named in a manner, which is so important. Another thing we're very proud of is we hired 44 new art and music teachers last year and got them out in all the schools. So that was a big step forward with that program. Very well received the long-standing Conservatory of the Arts. So that focus on the arts is something the committees wanted to do, we were able to execute that. During the spring, we used the time as we were pivoting to remote learning to provide a tremendous amount of training. We have 1,831 staff participate in over 566 trainings, for 16,111 PB hours for staff. Throughout the year, we also have always prided ourselves on a professional development plan for all staff. All teachers get seven full days of professional development. And our administrators have five days of professional development, including cultural proficiency and instructional leadership. Our early childhood, another big focus area of ours, we see our kids coming into kindergarten every year with great struggles to catch up. We added 300 additional full-day preschool seats to support early childhood education. We expanded pre-K, full-day pre-K, to four additional schools. And we reached universal full-day pre-K for four-year-olds and universal half-day for three-year-olds. So all of our four-year-olds are getting offered a full-day program. And working with our partners, we put a common preschool curriculum in Big Day for pre-K and SPS. But working with our partners, we also provided support for some of the private schools to also offer that quality program. Next slide, successfully converted all of our summer learning programs, and we're able to hold a remote summer school, offering every program we offered before. And we created a new program, a summer exploration program, to keep kids. We let everyone keep their computer home for the summer, and we provided a program for students who wanted to participate as an add-on to what we normally did, hired extra teachers to provide extra activities over the summer, understanding what a disruption that whole school shutdown caused. A big piece in our AP program, which I'm very proud of again, is the AP exam qualifying score, going from 24.8% to 40.7% in 2020. Huge gains. And at Central, a few years ago, if you remember, we were recognized that that school had the highest percent of minority students in the state participating in AP courses. So we've made tremendous gains there. Been a great deal of efforts on post-secondary participation and success. We have post-secondary success teams at every school. We have the Mass Department of Education support with our 100 Meals to College program. And we have a Gates Foundation grant for to-and-through advising to help students through all the issues with going on to college. And a lot of those issues are financial, so the FAFSA completion and getting them through and actually get that persistence to improve, which is a huge challenge. The next slide. Again, continuing on the whole FAFSA, so we have FAFSA fellows now at all of our high schools, helping families get the FAFSA form, because if you don't get that FAFSA form completed as a family, you just don't have a chance with the financial piece of getting through the college program. So we've done a tremendous amount of work in every building on that. And Yolanda's led those efforts. And along with our comprehensive school and guidance program, our counseling program. But the counseling division was a big part of the STL curriculum, the Second Step implementation, our social-emotional learning curriculum in all of our elementary schools. So instructional leadership is obviously the biggest category, but we're going to give you some examples of some of the pieces we put together in the other standards as well. And I'll try to go through them again as quickly as I can. A big presentation earlier tonight in the subcommittee was our HR strategies to attract and retain highly effective and diverse educator staff. We've minimized the teacher vacancies in the district by working on effective educator retention programs. So you can see the number of resignations which have decreased. And we included the presentation in the subcommittee in your packet of evidence in the binder. In your packet of evidence in the binder to show you that data. But it's very encouraging, and our diversity has increased at the district level progressively over the years. Showing us that we've accomplished a lot and but we have much more work to do. We we secured a hundred and fifty thousand in funding for the diverse educator recruitment, the DESI diversification grant. We've supported the the staff that has waivers so they can continue. And get the licensure, which is an enormous challenge and. Some of the relationship piece around MTEL. We provided a lot of support for folks continuing to take MTEL, which is a big challenge. And we have some very, very creative programs and partnerships with Springfield College. That S three to get a license in critical shortage areas. A hundred and eighty day program with UMass, which has been a great feeder for us. And the Reach to Teach program with Westwood State University. To try to work on that teacher diversity issue. And we were a founding member with Annals College Center for Equity and Urban Education. We also did Desi Inspired Fellows, the Desi Influence a hundred. Were part of the Desi Diversity Network, Call Me Mister and Teach Western Mass on the effort to. To work on teaching and staff diversity. Some of the other key pieces, you know, we worked really hard with our Student Opportunity Act money. Which we never received or haven't received it yet, it's still a fight in the legislature. But we devised a plan where every school would have a plan and they'd get all the Opportunity Act money. And be able to supplement the services in the school, so if that money does come in at some point. We have a plan where all that money is going to go to the school level to provide direct services for. For our students, and that plan was accepted like this. We improved our wellness program. We actually developed a comprehensive COVID nineteen district process for attestation. So that folks, when they're coming to work, as they swipe in that self attestation. Would occur so that we know that they're COVID free coming into work, and we did training around that. Our budget has won awards, and again, I think we've done a lot with our budget over the years, but it continues to win awards. Since school shutdown and through the summer, we served more than three million meals during the pandemic, so. Now, if you take our fall into account so far, we're at four million two hundred and fifty thousand, so. You know, there's many, many families have food security issues. And we really tackled that very, very effectively with our program, and I congratulate that road team on that. Also put Saint Walk Pass, the school in place, or Transportation Division to improve that piece. Our work on on school buildings has been second to no one in the Commonwealth. Over the years, we've put over six hundred million dollars into the buildings. Working with the Commonwealth, with the MSBA, over thirty accelerated repair projects. So in addition to all of our new schools, in in over thirty of our schools, we've done new roofs, new heating units. New windows and doors, and what we found as we were looking at our ventilation systems. Is we were in so much better shape than a light city like Worcester, as they haven't had an investment. In in those areas over the years, so tremendous progress there as well as all the school projects. We have the Franklin Lincoln Project, which is going to open this year at the end of the year for next year. And also a progress we've made on Homer to very that's moving full scale ahead with with a new park, the Fall of Twenty Three. Our safety and security division has done a great job, our arrests have decreased year after year. We've been able to get some grants to fund that rave nine eleven system, so. Folks can use their cell phones to improve communication. And another big piece is the Identikit visitor entry system that we've been able to put into place, so. Then safety and security was a big part of working with Melissa on that. Self attestation for employees for entering the building, so we're safe during this. Again, we've invested heavily, if you go to the next slide on the. Network infrastructure for our technology, and certainly we needed that this last year. And the laptops for all of our K twelve kids, again, my districts did not have that. We went a step further this summer into the iPads for all of our pre K kids, which we're distributing now. And part of the issue that's been experienced across the Commonwealth, of course, is not only the. Having the the laptops, but it's the connectivity. And we work with Comcast and on their Internet Essentials program. But families where we couldn't get the Comcast, but we were able to do the hotspots and deliver those to a lot of our families. Also, another thing we did was providing a laptop computers to all of our paras, and they've been able to. Assist effectively with a remote instruction and all of our clerks, so we continue all of our processes without a hitch. That concludes standard two, the next standard is family and community engagement. I think one of the best examples was what we were able to pull together and. Latonia gave us a great idea on this, was pulling that town hall meeting together to get get community input. On what's going on with reopening and the staff just did a great job. We streamed it in six languages, got input, were able to give feedback. And it was viewed by by well over five thousand members of the community, so. That was a very effective program and Kerry Martin was very helpful in getting all the languages taken care of, so it was an effective vehicle. Azelle's done a great job in using the media, Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. To improve our communication, which is so important. Next slide. Since taken over, Lourdes has done a good job reorganizing a PACE center and the PACE division. Better procedures for safety procedures, visitor follow marketing. A complete reorganization so that we can actually do all of our registration online right now when we need to. And families don't even have to go into PACE if they want to do the whole registration online. And very creatively, we have we have one of the best, I think. Events every year, our back to school celebration, we couldn't do that this year. But we distributed backpacks through the schools for our kids, so we can still get the backpacks out. We have PBIS moving forward on the next slide. So that we now have PBIS implemented in every one of our schools. City Connects is now implemented in every one of our schools. And you can see our safety data improving every year, the suspensions going down, that you know, the positive behavior improving. It's due to all the efforts with these programs, which have been a tremendous addition for us. We also make sure we have a parent facilitator funded in every one of our schools to really improve that parent outreach. And we continue to provide support for that home visit program to keep it going. Y-Aim's been a great partner on the next slide for us. Working with Big Y and the YMCA, we've kept that partnership going. And the rates of kids persisting through school and improving academically has been incredible with that partnership. Our parent academy had over two thousand people attend, of course, a workshop. Adult Ed Center, their Lydia has improved tremendously by documenting everything, putting programs in place. We put three three eleven high set equivalency exams out this year. And a hundred and seventy nine high school pre tests, so that center has really been automated and improved. One thing we did for our external partners to improve communication is we gave them SPS email accounts, so different. AmeriCorps, different agencies that work with us would be able to communicate effectively with us. And another thing we're very proud of, and Paul did a great job on this, is the community data warehouse, so our community partners. Can have access to student data. And where you see community partners working in after school programs, now you see a lot of our community partners. And you saw what came through in that grant we talked about last week. Very important, they have the data on how kids are doing so they can work with them effectively, or even working with them during the school day. We talked about the fully online registration. Another thing we did to help families, we this this summer, we created a YouTube channel. To support students and families with technology for both learning. Featuring over a hundred videos in six different language. Languages to help families navigate this move to remote learning, which was tremendously helpful. Paul organized all that very effectively with our communications folks. We did a My Stop Stop app, so parents will know when the student's bus is arriving. And we're doing a meal viewer app, so the kids, when they come back to school, they'll know what's on the menu. The last standard we'll go through now quickly for you was professional culture, standard four. Again, we talked about the strategic plan earlier, but we made substantial progress. And thirty five were our schools following the strategic plan, and we had zero schools in last accountability system. Identify as making limited or no progress, you can see under the strategic plan. We were moving the district forward, we didn't have those results this year as MCAS wasn't able to. To be handled. We launched the new district strategic planning process, the Portrait of a Graduate. We've had over two hundred community conversations and formed our Portrait of a Graduate, we got a. A great meeting today with a lot of our community partners that are very excited about it. But looking at the Portrait of a Graduate, we've had support from the Barr Foundation with that. And we presented, and Barr is so excited by the work there, looking to support us continuing the implementation of that work. The next slide. One thing that we went through last year was we put a team together with our sped division, working with our counseling division. And actually trained, we did a district training for all of our school on trauma informed practices. We also did a training, we provided a tremendous amount of diversity equity LGBTQ training. We've had Tyrone Howard and Colleen Smorton for all of our administrators. And now we're putting a plan together with our diary community, now Colleen Smorton. Actually train all the staff in the district on the diversity piece. Another thing we did after our shutdown is we we were meeting monthly with all of our unions to work through. Processes and keep communication open and solve all our problems at the table. When we closed down in March, there was so much to do and there was so much change. We now meet every week with the union to improve communication and the. Union's been with us in developing all of our plans and a real partner in the process, and I think the increase in communication has helped. We also partnered with the units on our COVID nineteen reopening plans, and we had to have. Agreements on remote learning, hybrid learning, et cetera, with the unions in order to open, we were able to get all those in place. So we can open without a hitch. One network that's been very important for us as a district is we've continued our participation in the urban superintendents network. Including all the trainings that occur, because the urban districts are just very, very different from the. The other districts in the Commonwealth. A big piece of our professional training that's gone on over the years is around instructional leadership teams. At every school and professional learning communities. We provided time for collaboration time for teachers in the buildings to be involved in the process to improve those goals. We talked about the seven days professional development, which we've provided high quality programs. And we reviewed and revised our social media guidelines for staff. To ensure student privacy rights and make sure we're moving in the right direction. That concludes that piece of the presentation. And if you want to go to your binder, I'll show you how the binder is organized, so. Walking through the binder, the first piece is what we went through already. And then what Patty did very nicely is separated everything else with yellow. And we have our, the first section is the review of our data, and that's the report we did a few weeks ago in October. And then under, again, separated in yellow would be every standard. All the evidence under standard one is under that first tab, under standard one. And some of the things are our SPS reopening plans, things like that, all organized under. Exactly what's under that. And then and then what Patty put in for you is green separators between every piece of evidence. For most of the things we presented on, where it was appropriate, we included evidence. Same thing with standard two, listing all the pieces in there. A big piece under standard two. You're going to see Maria's committee's presentation that they put forward tonight. In front of your binder relative to the diversity piece. One of my goals is around improving staff diversity, that. That piece is in there, but we listed all of the places where there are evidence, and again, all separated. With green pages to show you the evidence, but that diversity piece is a big piece. Then under standard three, same organization. Everything listed, and then standard four, the last with professional culture. So that's how the binder is organized, you have all the data upfront, the major initiatives. And then the evidence around the standards, which ties to the state's implementation of the evaluation process. That concludes my presentation there.
Thank you, Superintendent Warren, I'll open up the questions to school community members. Ms. Gresham.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. So my question regarding the diversity that went from thirty point six percent to thirty one point three percent. How many staff does that average to be, I mean? Is that one person or two or?
Oh, no, it's a lot more, because we have, we have five thousand employees. So it's more than one person. Those percentages are based on five thousand employees.
So maybe I'm asking it wrong. It talked about diversity, right?
Right.
Yeah, it was thirty point six percent, right? Under standard two.
And now, what percentage, are you on a certain page in that presentation?
Let me just see where I am here. It was on the standard two from the beginning.
The diversity report is is paginated, so you can find the page. Page, because there's the EPIM's data, which is for part of our staff, and there's the all staff diversity. Both improved.
All right. All right, I'll find it, maybe I'll ask it, I'll ask it later.
Well, all that data and percentages are in there, and that's going to be part of our next school committee meeting. Matt and Melissa are going to present that data to the entire school committee, it went through the subcommittee this evening earlier.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Regarding the the suspension data. I saw that there was an increase in our out of school suspension, and I'm wondering, was that all? Prior to the pandemic, was was that number increased that much even prior to the pandemic happening in the school closure? Or is that inclusive of the time from when kids had to work remotely?
So that data was all to day one nineteen. So it was the suspension, out of school suspension data, in school suspension data to day one nineteen, the day we closed down. And all the comparison data was the day one nineteen of those previous years. So we've gone down tremendously over time, as you can see, a great body of work. We had a slight uptick just before we closed down on March thirteen.
Okay.
So all of the data that shows that kind of information. Suspension. Through day one nineteen of of last year. And all the comparison year datas are through those comparison years, but only through day one nineteen, so it's similar data.
Now, can I ask a follow up to that? Or or do we know why we're starting to see an uptick in suspensions and? Even with the reasons why, I know we have a category that says like what the level of offense is as to why, maybe whatever. If a kid fought somebody versus, you know, there was some other offense or what have you that that warranted a suspension. Can we see a follow up report of what those reasons were and? I know Paul keeps something fancy like that, because I know I've seen it before. I think that would be very helpful for me to better understand like what is happening, why the why the kids are needing to be suspended.
Yet that, but it was a very small increase, and we're suspending forty percent less than we were, you know, I mean. We've we've had a sixty percent. we've, we've had a 60% decrease in 2012 with suspensions. So it was a slight uptick by a couple last year. So suspensions are way down overall.
Yeah, I, I do recognize that superintendent and I, I absolutely think it is something that I'm really happy to see. Because I think that was one of the primary things that folks pointed out when they talked about the school to prison pipeline. Is they talked about the suspension rates and the arrest rates. And so I think in, in our defense, we've done a tremendous job in making sure those numbers have decreased substantially. I think a lot of the, the complaints that I hear from constituents around school suspensions are kind of one of the lingering reasons why I still want to understand what, what is happening. And not saying that they're not warranted because if some kid fights or brings a weapon to school or whatever, like they deserve to be suspended. So I'm not saying that they're not just, I just like to better understand what it is and, and what that bake, break ground, breakdown, excuse me, is and, and helps me to kind of think about what other kind of programming or, you know, stuff like that. So I'm always trying to think proactively. And as you know, if the kids are in school, they learn. If they're not, they don't learn. And so as much as we can, um, get them to stay in school or be in a program that's going to be more suitable.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Any questions from school community members?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I go back to standard T two? Under management and operations. And it's, um, let's see, it's the second star where it says increase the diversity of staff in the district. You see that?
I think you're talking about during the, the presentation, not under the evidence now, Barbara?
Not the evidence.
Okay, just, just under the presentation, under the evidence.
Yeah, the presentation.
Okay, so what page are you on in the presentation?
21.
That's the EPM's, uh, report.
Yes, so, yes.
Yes, all of our teachers, paras, administrators, that kind of piece. So that's who is included in the EPM's report. That's not all staff. The all staff went up and the EPM's report. Desi report, it's only certain categories, but it involves thousands of employees.
Okay, so increase of teachers diversity. So teachers diversity went from 31.3 to 31.9? Right? So how, how many?
All EPM's reportable staff. So if it's all EPM's reportable staff, we're probably talking over 3,000 people. Thousands of folks, because you're talking about all teachers, all paras, all administrative staff. So you're talking in the thousands there, Barbara.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That, Ms. Gresham, any other questions, school community members? Any other question? I just, I had one thing, Superintendent. If you can clarify again, uh, on the student learning goals, because we're going to have MCAS. How do we, we base on what?
So the ANET results are here for you to base it on. We got very good growth, a glossy word. Okay, that is one, so we use the ANET and substitute the data, that's right in the presentation. Now, so use the ANET is what we have instead of the MCAS. And we can see growth there.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say. Any other questions or comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I ask Attorney Phelps a question?
Sure, Attorney Phelps.
Okay, sure. All right, thank you. So I know Desi last year said there was a new, new rubric for evaluating the superintendent.
They, they were rolling out one. I attended a workshop. And, um, I think I provided you the materials in that regard. To my knowledge, the guidelines or the suggested templates were not, have never been promulgated since that time. I would assume that's part of COVID's, uh, but I can double check for you on it. All it did was to narrow the, uh, amount of, um, categories to make it less cumbersome.
Okay, would that be the indicators?
Yes.
It changed the rubrics of indicators, but it didn't change the standards.
That's right.
We're doing the rating on the standard.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll go to, uh, the, the school committee attorney. Ms. Attorney Officer Phelps to review documents and procedures related to superintendent's evaluation 2019, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All of you have been through this process before, so I'll give you a, a quick refresher. Um, there are instructions for completing the superintendent evaluation. And just going through that, uh, the first page of the four-page evaluation. You would enter your name, uh, printing your name, signing it and dating the evaluation once you've completed it. Page two are the superintendent's performance goals. These are the goals that are established by the superintendent at the beginning of the, uh, school year. The only, uh, thing to keep in mind as you're going through these, uh, uh, performance goals is the reference to the MCAS 2020 average. That is in your binder under that category. But it's actually because there wasn't an MCAS, um, using the ELL scores. And, um, last year's MCAS reports. So, um, that, those goals can be completed by reference to the material in the book.
Right, because the ANET is shown, uh, right where we used to put the MCAS. So they can look to the ANET scores.
Then, once you have, um, made the assessment with regards to the performance goals. There is an overall assessment of the progress towards those goals. And that's on page three of the superintendent e- evaluation. The categories of did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded. Circle those. Some people check them, um, but those are required part of the assessment using the step one, the previous page ratings. Step two is performance on the standards. So the first step one are goals, step two is the standards. These are the ones that have not changed at all. The instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture. That category rating system is unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary. Again, you would need to, uh, tick the box with regards to each of those standards. Page four, uh, then is a combination. On page four of step three, uh, which is a, a combination of the ratings of step one and step two. So you do step one, ratings, step two, and then you combine it in a step three. And then step four is the overall impact on student learning, low, moderate or high. Just a reminder that, um, if, uh, there is a box ticked for the overall summative rating of exemplary, needs improvement or unsatisfactory, uh, that does require, um, a written explanation. Um, and without the written explanation, Desi's recommendation is to ignore the evaluation. So you really want to be careful that if you tick any of those boxes, that you do, um, write written comments. Obviously, written comments are always welcome, even if they are not part of any of those boxes having been ticked. Because we use them, um, as examples from each of you with regards to the superintendent's evaluation. I'm always available for questions on how to fill this out. Where, I know I've fielded questions over the years by members of the committee who are looking for information and wondering where that information can be located in the binder. Please feel free to call me or email me, um, should you have questions in that regard. Timing of this, um, I, this is probably the most amount of lead time a school committee, this school committee has had. So it's a little, um, shy of three weeks. They are due Monday, December 7th. Just to remind you of the process, once I get, um, the evaluations from each of you, I collate them, tabulate them, put them into percentages. And then I meet with the mayor as chair of the school committee, who makes an overall summative evaluation that, um, he presents to the school committee. And then the next step is based upon that, um, whether or not the school committee is entertaining, um, a, a performance increase in the superintendent's salary. Happy to entertain any questions anyone might have.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Hearing none, I think that concludes the meeting. I wish each and every one of you and your families good health.
Yeah, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
We're not going to be, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice Chair Tom for second. Second, I believe by Ms. Naylor, roll call vote is required because of Zoom. Adam Clark, please follow roll.
Ms. Hurst, absent, Attorney Murphy.
Yes.
Ms. Naylor? Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
You're muted, Barbara.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes, matter passes. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Have a great night. Take care. Good seeing you guys.